Absentee voting and absentee ballot board for school district elections not held on the day of the statewide election. That is our eight point five.
On new business.
Yep, under new business. Do I hear a motion to do the additions?
So moved.
Katie? What's that?
To approve the agenda as presented, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm just trying to alleviate a motion.
Okay.
Right? Okay.
Yeah. Okay, we'll move on to visitors.
None.
None? Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Randy, do I hear a second?
Second.
Katie, does anybody want anything pulled out of the consent agenda to discuss? Nobody?
I would like to just recognize that we have our gifts to the school district. Davida has made a nice donation to our wellness center. Carla Lull has made a donation to Brown Elementary's help fund. First Bank and Trust has donated to the choir for holiday music. The Jasper Tuesday Morning Bible Study Group has donated to the Wellness Room. The Jasper Progress Study Club also made a donation to the Wellness Room. Myron and Nancy Coats have made a donation to the Wellness Room. And then Peace United Methodist Church has made a donation for lunch accounts for students. And Christ the King Lutheran Church made a donation for the Wellness Room. So thank you for all of those individuals and organizations for their donations to our school district.
Donations I see total up to nineteen hundred ninety-five dollars. That's a nice amount of money.
It's amazing.
Yes, it is.
How do we get or how does the Wellness Room becoming so like well-known that we're getting these donations? Do we have, is it just word of mouth or?
Counselors, I think people ask, you know, where, how's it going and if it's needed? So, yeah, it's mostly word of mouth.
I feel like that thing's like taken off.
Yep, yep.
Yep.
Once you start them, usually there isn't any issue with keeping them stocked with things because people want to make sure that we have them, so.
So, all those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Administrative reports, six point one administration, six point one one. Jackie, review of budget year-to-date.
Okay, well, listen, for the new board members, if you want me to say more, just let me know. But this is the budget year-to-date. Basically, what I do is it's fiscal year nineteen original is in the first column and then where we're at year-to-date is in the middle column and then I do a percentage to see where we're at. Right now, we're at forty-nine percent. And last year at this time, we're also at forty-nine percent, which is a good thing. So we're at where we're supposed to be and it doesn't look like I have made any major errors in the budget.
Any questions for Jackie?
I don't think so.
Okay, then we'll move on. Corey's not here.
Or Tony.
Or Tony?
Yep.
On to six point one point four. Melanie?
Good evening. We have our achievement and integration report. Mr. Enerson is going to get that up on the screen for us. That's what I'm presenting tonight. Our staff had its first PLC after our holiday break last Wednesday. We're taking a deep dive into one aspect of our standards-based alignment and we had a really good response from our staff. They were highly engaged and it was really good to see that. So, achievement and integration plan. This is due to the fact that Edgerton is hit the racially, let's start over. My mouth has not worked as well today because I haven't worked it as much.
It's cold.
All right, so Edgerton has been identified as a racially isolated district because of one of their student groups. And because of that, they are eligible for these achievement and integration funds. Any school district that borders Edgerton School District is also eligible. And these funds are available to us for three years. So, we are working with Edgerton, we're collaborating to create our plans. We each have to create our own plan. Parts of it can and should be similar, but they don't have to be similar and then some parts will be different. And then we're presenting this tonight for you guys' information and then next board meeting, we'll ask for approval of it. So when we were deciding what we needed to have supported as far as achievement, achievement and integration funds are primarily here to support closing achievement gaps. So when we look at our achievement gaps, our biggest gap is our difference between our free and reduced students and our white students and the proficiency in math and reading. So if you look at the third column where the proficiency difference is at, that is the percentage of proficiency difference between free and reduced and our white population. And if you notice, like grade four is twenty percent difference in both of them. And we want those and we need those to be zero, smaller than they are or closer to zero. Because then that means there is not a gap between the proficiency in any student group. So as an average, our gap in reading is about eighteen percent and our average math gap is nineteen percent, almost twenty. So, that's where we based our needs, where we found our needs was the difference between our free and reduced and our white proficiency in math and reading on the MCA tests. So if we go through, we came up with three interventions. And our first intervention is a math specialist. And the grade levels that will be served will be kindergarten through eighth grade. Pipestone Area Schools will have this person two-thirds of the time and will pay for this person two-thirds of the time. And then we will share this person with Edgerton Public Schools one-third of the time. We will be the fiscal host for that person, but the time will be divided. So this will be a teacher FTE and they will provide curricular and instructional support to teachers in grades K through eight to close achievement gaps in the free and reduced student group for the gap in math. And then the math specialist will assist teachers in grades K through eight in the planning of instruction. They will co-teach when appropriate, review assessment data with staff to build their capacity to make database decisions and model best practices in instruction and intervention in mathematics. So, the planned requests that we have key indicators of progress for each of the three years that we would receive these funds. And so, we base some of these key indicators upon our MCA data. We base some of these upon our FAST assessment data. That is our formative assessment that we have listed for this program. And then we also are gaining perception data from teachers as well as perception data from students. So I won't go into all the numbers, but know that our end goal is our 2021 goal and we just broke it down in sizable, manageable chunks to get us there. So, and you'll notice that the key indicators of progress, some of them are similar for each of our interventions because our main goal is the same. We want to close that gap between the free and reduced and our white population in our math. We could go to our next intervention. Our next intervention is a math interventionist. This person will support students in grades three through eight in need of additional intervention to master grade level skills. Supporting these students' needs will work to close achievement gaps in the free and reduced student group in math. And referral to the interventionist will be based upon MCA and FAST data review. The grades that will be served will be grades three through eight and this person will be full-time at Pipestone. You might wonder, well, why don't we have kindergarten, first grade and second grade? Well, they have title services. So they already have interventions that are provided at those grade levels and third grade is the first year that we're tested for MCA. And some of our biggest gaps are in that third through eighth grade range. So, that's why we focused in there. Again, our key indicators of progress are our MCA scores, our FAST scores. And we're also looking at the number of students who do receive support from math that will decrease over time. You know, if they're doing a good job, they're going to work themselves out of a job. So we want that score, that percentage to decrease. And then the positive perception of students who receive support, we want that to increase. And the positive perception of teachers, of students who have received the support to increase. Like this is doing what it's supposed to. Our third intervention, thank you, Mr. Enerson. Our third intervention is professional development time. Time and resources for the math specialist, the math interventionist and teachers of mathematics in grades K through eight to plan and assess their instruction and student achievement in order to close achievement gaps in the free and reduced student group in math. This would be for grades K through eight from Pipestone and Edgerton. So, we would pool our resources together. The key indicators of progress here are still our math, MCA scores, our FAST scores. And then, looking at growth, that third achievement or that third key indicator of progress is as measured by the MCA math test, students in grades four through eight will increase their achievement of high growth from twenty-one percent to forty percent. That's a piece of data that we can only see after the students have taken the test one year. So fourth grade is the first year we can see any gain in growth. And then we can't see it between eighth grade and when they take it again in eleventh grade because then there's the gap of time between. But when we're looking at those fourth through eighth graders and having students have high growth, if over time, a student only ever maintains medium growth, they, by the time they're in eleventh grade, will not be proficient. We need our students to be challenged and growing at high levels so they will hit that achievement and proficiency and soar above it. So that's the, that's that secret sauce that we need to, need some support on in figuring out, how do we get them to grow at high levels and not just the, maintain the normal growth? And then using some perception data from our teachers, our math specialists and interventionists, showing that this PD has had a positive impact on them and we hope that that grows over time as well. Overall, we are understanding and we know that this is new funding. We can't use this to supplant any program that we currently are offering, so it has to be new. And it's a wonderful opportunity for our district to have these new funds coming in. Plus, it's a wonderful opportunity for our students to have this focus support in math. We've had focus supported reading with our reading corps, with our Title I, but our math sometimes gets pushed aside because, well, it's important to read. Well, you also have to read to do math, but at the same token, we need our students to think in that mathematical brain and be able to apply those skills across and outside of our educational system. Do you have any questions? Mr. Enerson, would you like to add anything?
The dollar amount for Pipestone is about a hundred and five thousand dollars annually for the next three years. Edgerton's is about forty-two thousand dollars, forty-three thousand dollars. So together, we have that amount to kind of work together with. They've asked us to be the fiscal host, meaning we'll hire the math interventionists and probably pay the other stipends and then we bill them out and they'll reimburse us. So, that's kind of how the finances will work.
So does the grant take care of all three of those positions then? Or will there be a cost to the budget?
There's just two positions.
Oh, there's only two?
Oh, yeah, two. Because professional development, they'll pay for the teacher's time after school or the sub if we have that during the day, which it'll probably be an after-school thing. So it'll pay their time and any resources that we would need, that'll pay for that.
What we set up was within the parameters, so it'll all be funded by this.
Back to the very first slide.
This one or the data?
The data. The grade five, why do you think there's such a short?
Their gap is smaller.
Yes.
That is really, that, and this was this past year's, so it's this year's sixth graders. This was last year's fifth graders. So when we looked at them over time, they tend to be a higher performing group, this group of kids from third grade, fourth grade and fifth grade. So they are the anomaly.
So they've been showing this the whole time that they've been testing?
Yep.
So will the interventionists and the specialists work only with the free and reduced kids?
No.
Okay, so.
No, any student who needs help. Our free and reduced population is fifty percent or greater in each of our buildings and so that hedges on all students.
Yeah.
You know, and we don't want to, you know, pigeonhole anyone and pull out the fact that we are free and reduced. So it will be provided to any student who needs that support.
Knowing that most likely we'll be targeting the group that we need to.
Yep. And when you think about it, we're working with the individual students who have the highest need and we're working with the teachers to build up their skill so that, you know, they're meeting them and being able to take them higher. So it's not just happening outside the classroom. And I don't foresee this person, the interventionist, to be just a pull-out. I see this person as being more of a push-in. So many of our elementary classrooms do guided math, like they do guided reading. So they have the kids in groups that rotate, they go through centers essentially. And each time they go through a center, one of the centers is the teacher. Well, wouldn't it be awesome if two of the centers were a teacher and one was the interventionist working on some specific skills and one was that teacher working on other specific skills that need to be happening? So, more push-in than pull-out, all students based upon need will receive the support.
So the goal is to hit the, I guess, the standards by year three. Are we going to plan? So what if we don't hit that goal? Will we have like some plan in place that we can continue having these positions without the dollars there?
Good question.
Right now, they're dependent on the dollars.
Dependent, very much so.
I would say by year three, Pipestone will hit the racially isolated district number.
Hopefully.
And then we'll modify all over again.
Yeah, we'll be our own.
So how many of the other districts that border Edgerton do you know that are utilizing?
Just us.
Just us.
Well, Murray County and RTR, they've been with, I believe, Westbrook Walnut Grove for the last three or six years, who's also been in contact with Marshall. So, that's where there's been kind of a whole slew of districts that have been doing this for a while. This is the first time we've been eligible for these funds. Worthington has, you know, this and we borrowed or gathered their plans and was kind of reviewing what these other school districts do and kind of came up with this, what this idea and plans for where we're at, so.
And based upon our needs and our student needs.
I think the, probably the best thing about these dollars is, is that it isn't, it's used, it can be used by everyone. So it isn't where we're pulling out groups or any, it's, we, every student who is not proficient gets access to these resources. So, that's what I think is, is one of those things that went, hey, somebody did something with some common sense. So, that's what happened there.
Any other questions?
If you think of further questions, it'll probably be in your board packet for your
next meeting and it'll be the full plan, but if you find you have some questions based upon that, don't hesitate to call.
Plan and budget you'll need to approve before we send it into MBE, so.
When would this take effect?
About next school year.
Okay.
This is all for next year.
Thank you, Melanie. Six point one point five, superintendent?
Enrollment is up again, just another couple students, so we're, evidently we've got, something's here, yeah. So it's good that they're back. So, like I said, in October, we had a bunch leave. It was kind of a little bit shocking, but we've kind of rebounded back to our numbers where we were at, which is good for our budget, of course. I also wanted to mention that we, Pipestone Area Schools has three teachers nominated for Minnesota Teacher of the Year. Great honor. I think there's a hundred and fifty-eight across the state that have been nominated and we have three. Nancy Sibineller is a fourth grade teacher at Hill. She's been nominated. Jamie Danks teaches Spanish here at the Middle School High School. She's been nominated. And Jamie Fennickel is a math teacher here at the Middle School High School. And so those three have been nominated and what a great honor just to, just to have your name in that list. That will now go on and I think they're, they break that down to some semifinalists and there's a process that goes with that, so. The other thing I had was school closings. We're kind of in a rash here. Might be the winter where we have an awful lot of days. So I don't know if you guys have any questions. We have it all laid out in our calendar of the days that we need to make up. It's on the bottom down here. Right now, the January eighteenth, if you recall, we canceled school that day. That'll be a virtual day on February eighteenth. Today now, that would be slated to be made up on April eighteenth, which is another virtual day. I'm guessing that we're likely going to be closing tomorrow and Wednesday because of the cold. So then that'll end up taking Easter Monday and May thirty-first. We will look into the possibility, and I know it's not on here, but March eleventh is an in-service day. We may want to see if we can utilize that somehow as a virtual makeup day also. So we'll have to see what happens. My concern is, is when you get into these patterns, sometimes you end up, we might have eight, ten, twelve snow days this year and then we have to sit down and start making decisions on how deep into June do you want to go.
Where we know what has, I mean, is there any way we could do a virtual day Wednesday or that if it's not on the calendar, we can't do that?
Well, we have, our plan for virtual days is not where we can respond and just do a virtual, some schools have this where they implement a virtual or flexible learning day, the day of, like today, for example. Our plan does not have that yet. Our staff didn't feel comfortable and competent enough to move into having that type of plan. We'll continue to work with them and talk, but I would, I would like to see us move in that direction because right now Wyndham is implementing flexible learning days.
Especially where you know what's coming, it'd be nice to be able to.
Lakeview, there's a few schools that have, and they were doing this early, they were on it right away and their staffs kind of got in. Ours, we kind of pushed a little bit last year with this.
Well, and last year.
Tried a few days, so, and we, after that, we were like, well, do you feel comfortable enough to move forward? And still kind of like now, we'd like to try it a few more days, so.
And last year was our first year of being one-to-one device with our students. So, you know, getting that, you know, because not every grade level, five through seven, takes a device home nightly, you know? So that's something, fifth and sixth grade, their devices oftentimes don't leave the building. So that's something that we need our staff to help our students be more comfortable with and more responsible with so that we can get to this where, hey, we're having an e-learning day.
And that, the problem with that is though is we're not just a K-12 district.
Correct.
We're pre-K and we've got those kids in that pre-K to five that we need to address at the same time.
And last year, our pre-K through second grade had a bingo card activity that went home so that they had activities in, instead of spelling out bingo, you know, one was for math and one was for reading and the kids could create bingo any way they wanted as long as they did one thing in each area. There are many other school districts who send that home right away in the fall and that's at home for them. So this time, you have to pick one and the next time, you pick another. And so that's what our staff is going to have to create now for our next e-learning day because they didn't do that at the beginning of the year. So.
That's what I wonder, if you have stuff in place, like you said, send it home in the fall. I know some people lose it or whatever.
You know, I mean, it's, then you. Well, and to have it, all the teachers last year also had it on their web pages as a PDF, so you could still access it and see it in, even if the kid didn't have a device, the mom could see it on the phone or what have you, so.
What about, what about with homes that might not have Wi-Fi?
Some of it, if they know that ahead of time, the student can still take their book home and do things that way. It's mostly about an assignment. A lot of things can also be downloaded onto a device so that you don't need internet. It just is about knowing ahead of time and I think we can make those accommodations pretty easily. We had talked about trying to get Wi-Fi hotspots and, but, you know, that ended up getting to be pretty expensive for the number that we needed. So we kind of, that's another reason why we're kind of holding off on this a little bit. It does take some planning to do that, these types of things, so. Especially for next couple of days, it's going to be cold, so people aren't going to be out and about. It's going to be, you know, staying in, so. So I just, you know, I don't know. We don't have any policy on temperature guidelines. There are some school districts that do right now. I mean, we're talking thirty below straight-up temp, wind chills are going to be fifty to seventy. I think it's pretty, I mean, that's where it's like, that's a no-brainer. If you get in the middle though, I mean, sometimes it's like, I don't know if that's something we need to think about or what we want to do, it's.
Like implementing a certain number, you mean, always like?
I think you get into the Minneapolis-St. Paul and they have it like when it's twenty-five below or thirty-five below wind chill, recommending you not have school or students aren't to go out. But I don't, you know.
Us with our buses too, I assume that Ludols have some say with those buses when it gets this dangerously cold with the, out in the middle of nowhere. We got big district.
Right.
They feel pretty good about their fuel, you know? Cold isn't as much. I mean, I think they feel pretty comfortable with their buses and know they're in good working order and they pour some treatment in the fuel in each tank when it gets like this so that they, they feel pretty comfortable. They haven't had, ever had a bus gel up on them. The issue like today was, is I mean, it's just, it's plugged up out in the country. I was told if we, if you send us out, we're going to get stuck. And I said, okay, then we're not going.
Yeah, right.
That was, that was the call. And they still haven't plowed, so I mean, they're, it's just.
Yep, and that's real relevant today, but when we do get these extreme cold temperatures, no matter how prepared you are. Right.
And there's some kids walking to school.
Right.
I mean.
And I know, I did talk to Lance and Marcy before I came in tonight and both of them would much rather us err on the side of caution than to have something happen.
Right, I agree.
And if we are going to do it, their suggestion is, is get it out there now so that the public knows it and the parents have some time to adjust to it.
Right, see, and daycare, especially younger kids.
Yes.
I agree.
Yep. But that's still in your hands because that's what you are in charge of.
Right.
You know?
Yep.
And I just, just want to let you know what their concerns were and that we're very confident in what you've been deciding.
Well, it's, actually, most of the decisions are being made. Well, it's, actually, most of the decisions are being made for me, I. Everybody else is pulling it, and they're just getting earlier, I, I mean, last year, we usually were waiting till the mornings to make decisions, and last couple weeks, it's like a contest to see who can go first, I, so I'm like, okay, you know. You know, and today, Laverne and Hillsbeaver Creek had class, they just went two hours late, but they don't have the snow we have, and they're not.
Right.
Plugged up, and from what I've heard from other schools, it's, it's us and Edgerton and Murray County Central that have the most snow. We got, we got nailed in that last one, and so we're, we're the ones, schools that are plugged up with, with the busing, so.
Well, and with the areas I've been traveling with my job, I mean, it is from here to where they did, you get to Hardwick South, there is not that much snow. You got south towards Rock Rapids, from there, all the way to Fremont, Nebraska, there are hardly any.
So, yeah, fun stuff.
Yep.
Right. So that's, that's where I've, what I've got for us.
Okay.
Here, so.
Six point two, school board members, MSBA conference reports, and the facilities steering committee.
Yep.
Everybody who's here is up there.
I don't know if you want to report out anything from MSBA conference, so.
I don't know, my take, take home from the conference was, I think we should, as a board or school district, take time at least once a year to acknowledge like each sector of people that work in our facilities. And just let them know that we're appreciative of their jobs that they do, or, you know, and I don't know what that entails, I was going to kind of talk to Ms. Barkman about that sometime, coming up here too, and just see, you know, what their, what the options or what she thought would be good to do something like that, because I do, you know, where, that was like, one of the big things that I took off from it, that making sure that your teachers and your amateurs and all those people feel appreciated at their jobs, and that just helps create a whole, as a whole, a better environment to be in.
Brad, Amy?
Yeah, and you guys, what'd you guys think?
I just thought it was very worthwhile, it was really, it was a great two days, and came up with a lot of takeaways.
I enjoyed it, it was a, it was a learning experience for sure. An overload of information.
Well, I, you know, I, I, like I've, I've told others, I would, you know, would like to go back next year, because I think once I have a year under my belt, you know, a lot of it will
be more relevant than being as green as we are in the job with the information that's given. But definitely, you know, it's just a, them round, some of the round tables and, and other speaking, speakers, yeah, there was a lot of good takeaways, I felt.
How about you, Randy, anything you want to add?
I thought there's a lot of interesting topics that it makes you think, you know, why aren't we doing something like that, or how can we start doing things like that? Makes you think that we could be more innovative maybe sometimes, and just trying to think outside the box on how we can get there, that's kind of what I got out of it.
Well, I had gone again to the one on, you know, student member on the school board. And I, I still, the, the one that did come up was, they're usually using the student body president as their school board member. And they just automatically become the school board member, and the kids really enjoy it, they really feel that their, their voice is heard then, and they, they. The board members that I talked with, they've really got a better feeling of how the flow of the school is too, what the kids are liking, what they're not. And so on.
Well, I think for different perspective, you know, that you might not know not being a student, not being in the school every day.
Yep. Okay, then we'll move on to seven, there's no business.
Well, we got the facilities steering committee.
Oh, yeah, facilities steering committee.
They met last week with ISG and Kraus Anderson, and they're beginning the information process, or information sharing.
Yeah.
Communication.
Communication strategy.
Yeah, and we're planning on notifications, we have to notify all of the voters that there will be an election and what they're voting on. And we should have brochures from Kraus Anderson, kind of about our, what we're asking for, how much, and those types of things, so. We're planning to get those mailed out, Deb's been working on getting those lists and things like that, so we'll be doing a big mailing, hopefully have all of this and be ready to go next week, if not shortly the week after. And the reason is, is because absentee ballots begin on February twenty-second, so people can begin voting, so we have to get some information out, so that people know if they want to start voting, so. And later on, that was our addendum, is the absentee ballot portion in our new business, so. But we'll keep you posted, we're supposed to have a meeting tomorrow night, and I think we're going to look to move that, it's too cold to have those guys drive out here, and I think we'll just kind of hunker down and look to reschedule if they're available Thursday or Friday this week, and that's the way we'll move forward with that.
Okay. Seven, no old business, new business, approved payment of regular monthly bills, do I hear a motion? Katie, Brad, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of approved payment of regular monthly bills signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion passes. Eight point two, approved treasures report for December of twenty eighteen, do I hear a motion?
So move.
Randy, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Amy, any questions? Any questions? Hearing none, all those, all those in favor to approve the treasures report for December of twenty eighteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion passes. Eight point three, approved policy two one three, school board committees.
Just add, we, at the January organization meeting, we added one committee, which is the facility steering committee, so we've put that in our policy as a, as you would like. There are three members, plus any staff and community as requested is the makeup of that committee. Its purpose, and, and just so, all of our committees are directed by the full board as to what they're, what they are to do. The facility steering committee has three primary tasks, one is to provide consultation regarding the bond referendum for a new elementary school and facility improvements. Their second is to review and monitor progress of construction, including the budget, construction manager communications, and advise the full board on any changes that may be required. And then their third is to make recommendations to the full board regarding any item that may need to be addressed during the scope of the project. So this is really a committee that is being put in place to work, to oversee our bond referendum process and, and all of that, and if, if it does pass, they would then continue in with construction and overseeing that, so. This committee will probably be around for three or four years, and then when that project's all done, we won't need that committee anymore. So that was the addition on that policy.
Anybody have any questions on eight point three, policy two thirteen, school board committees? Nobody, okay, all those in favor of eight point three, approved policy two thirteen, school board committees signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Jeff, I'm sorry, I don't believe I hear a motion. Or did I get it, maybe I just didn't read it down.
You did, first, Katie?
No, I don't have a motion.
Well, I thought I had one on that, okay, then I need a motion to approve policy two thirteen, school board committees.
So moved.
Brad?
Second.
And Randy. Now, all those in favor to approve policy two thirteen, school board committees signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion passes. Eight point four, strategic planning.
Last June, and for the two new board members, July, we, we, we should be setting our goals for the year. And when I first started as superintendent, I think it was the July meeting, I said, so what do you guys want me to do? And so that was, that's what our goals are about, so the district should really, what do you want me to do, what, what is our goals, and what should we be striving for? We currently have three goals that have been set by the board, that is to improve student achievement, to have leadership.
Effective leadership.
Effective leadership, and also, the third goal is to have effective communication with our community. So those are the three goals, they went through a process prior to my coming to the district that was conducted by Big River, that surveys your employees, your community, the board, and from that, you kind of start to get a feel for what, what it is that we want to be doing, it's a strategic planning process. So I think where we're at in the board last summer said, you know, let's just wait until January, they didn't, you know, they said, let's move forward with the goals, but they believe that we really need to start on a new process. Now, I'm not saying we have to start this right now, because we do have a bond referendum coming up in April, so I don't think we need to do too many things, but following that, I think we should, I guess up to you. We should, we should start having that conversation. Biggest thing is, is when do you want to start it, when do you think we should move forward, give me, and then also, who do you want to facilitate? I don't feel comfortable enough, I guess, to facilitate that whole process, and I know MSBA does it, Big River did it, there's a few other groups that will facilitate a strategic planning process for, for this, for a school district, so. I guess that's, I'd like to hear from you, and what do you guys like to do, and when, and with who.
Well, I think we need to wait till after the bond election. See whether or not a bond passes, and then I think we just need to probably go out for bids, or to get ideas of who wants to do it, and who could best satisfy the needs that the district needs.
In my phase trainings with MSBA, there was a lot of districts that had them facilitated, and they had just really good, good remarks about that. And Marshall, I think, just went through that, and I hopped on their website today and kind of reviewed it, and it's a full-blown three-to-five-year plan, and it was, it was really good.
Well, I know when we used Big River, they were, at the time, I thought quite good too.
Was that Bruce Miles?
Yep, but I think, you know, again, we have a new outlook of the board, that, you know, the whole board needs to come together. Let's get an idea who's out there and can do what we need, and then the, then the whole board can say, well, this is what we like.
Right.
Because we've got some fresh faces on there, maybe they're seeing something that I, that when I was on that, at the time we did it, won't see now. But I think we do need a, probably a motion to say when we want to start, and kind of the route we want to go.
One of those may have changed in the, I mean, that's quite a few years difference too, I mean, people's perspective of the district, or.
Well, and they should change.
Yeah, they should change, we hope they change.
Yes.
Whether that is our, you know.
Yep, I mean, that's, that's why we write a strategic plan, so that hopefully you can kind of roll in different aspects of it, so.
Do we want to time it to where the goals were, well, I don't know how long a strategic planning process takes, like to implement all the goals, well, do you remember what it took last time?
It took a fair amount of meetings, because we didn't have a strategic plan in place at the time.
Okay, so if we could.
We've got our plan in place, they can play off of that, and we can tweak or start over, or however we want to go.
So if we started after the bond in April, would it be doable to have it implemented by the beginning of next school year?
I, I talked with Jeff Olson, who facilitates the Minnesota School Board Association's process, and I think about a three-month start-to-finish of the process.
So that could be just prior to start of school.
So maybe that's a timeline.
Does that matter, though, if it's over the summer, you get as good of involvement from?
Well, they, they do more surveys, I think the board would be taking that information and doing some of that with some staff, you know, but we can talk with them, might know about that.
Staff and then their facilitator.
I think the model MSBA uses is like three community meetings and one, I, I'd have to read it again, but.
That's why I wonder if it'd be hard this summer to get.
Because it would be nice to have the community involved in some of the meetings to give us ideas of what they want to.
But even if you did it in September, start in September, then you'd have it ready for the next January, you know, like the next. I mean, I just wonder if you'd have better community involvement if you waited until after summer was over.
But there's probably a fair amount that the board itself could start.
Right, we could, yeah, true.
Start it up.
And also keeping in mind that your strategic plan feeds into the, your, our world's best workforce plan, that is our world's best workforce plan essentially, and we need to start the school year with a world's best workforce plan. So that has to be done, you know, over the summer, so that we start the school year, because that needs to be posted, and we need to have the community meetings and input, and that those two things, the strategic planning meetings can equal that as well, so.
We have goals, I mean.
We have goals, yep, so it's just, you know, keep that in mind as well.
Does the strategic plan, would it involve like a three-to-five-year financial outlook too? Because, I mean, so far, we kind of go year to year, right? Like, do we ever forecast out three years or anything like that?
I don't remember, I know your, your policy.
Yeah.
Your, your policy is going to dictate where your percentages will happen, but that's about it. Because you, you only have a two-year projection from the state government as to what your state contribution is going to be.
Yeah, I think a lot of districts do three-to-five-year financial outlooks, so they just use enrollment trends, and you can.
You can have general goals, and I think, you know.
Okay, does anybody have an idea of when they would like to start the strategic planning, to make a motion, or?
A motion, we start looking into, or I guess, would we be getting bids, or? A motion that we look after the bond vote in April to, I guess, invite or investigate potential strategic planning resources.
You look at companies, or look at what?
Uh, yeah.
I call them like facilitators.
Facilitators, okay.
Strategic planning facilitators.
So look at facilitators after the bond election in April?
Well, could we start looking at them now, but then?
I, I can start to pull together who does this, and maybe we can get some informational sheets to have, I don't know if the committee, I don't know if any of our board committees really fit into this.
Well, it could actually be a little under your budget, I suppose.
Or we could just simply have a work session with the board and review these, and maybe they can come in, we can do some interviews. However.
Okay, so then we're going to need a motion directed Kevin to start looking for facilitators.
After the April.
Well, but did you want him to start looking for facilitators in April, or did you want him to look now with the plan of starting strategic planning after the bond?
That one.
Just, just re-say your motion.
I, I motion to direct Kevin to investigate strategic planning facilitators, starting now, to have ready after the election in April for the bond.
And start strategic planning.
And start strategic, start strategic, strategic planning then.
Got it.
Got it?
Camera for sugar.
Yeah.
Do I hear a second?
I second that.
Amy, any questions? Anybody have any questions? No questions, all those in favor of Randy's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion passes. Eight point five, resolution relating to establishing the location for absentee voting and an absentee ballot board for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election. All those in favor?
So move.
Randy, second?
Second.
Katie, any questions?
This is just part of the election process, so that we have. This is just part of the election process so that we have, we do the absentee ballots here. And is it also the, the board? The absentee ballot board?
Ballot board. It just gives us the authority to have a ballot board count ahead of time if we still wish to do that.
So, do you use the election judges to do the absentee?
Three or four years ago when we did it, I had two from the county auditor's office do it. When we did the election seventeen, that was the last, um, we just did it on the day of the election. And then the election judge is there and they just check all the ballots and then they walk. So, it could probably be done on the same day as the election.
What you would want?
But we have, yeah, this also allows us if we want to do that prior.
Hmm, so we know what the absentee ballots are before the election.
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
But when do absentee ballots, when is the last day you can absentee ballot? Is it the election day?
Yes, you can vote on it on election day. Yes, that's correct.
So, they cannot be counted then until election day?
No, they can be counted prior.
They can?
Yes.
With this resolution.
But you still, but you, being, you still have to accept absentee ballots on election day though.
Right, but say we got four hundred and we're like, ooh, well, let's run them now. And then, you know.
Okay.
I think they came and ran them twice in two, or, I don't know, a couple of elections ago, I guess.
Okay.
So. I mean, I have to, you can't absentee vote, I don't believe, on election day because it's election day. I accept everything up until mailtime as it comes in, you know, as an absentee ballots.
Okay. But you just cannot walk in on that, on election day to the district office to do an absentee ballot?
Well, I don't think so. I'd have to look into that for sure, but I don't know why they wouldn't go to the polling place to vote.
Right.
Right.
At that point, so.
Well, stranger things happen.
Right, yeah, I know.
Different absentee ballot comes in the day after.
They're not counted.
Doesn't count. They have to be in.
Yeah.
Yeah, this gives us the right to, if we want to count them ahead of time. I think doing it with the machine, the first time around, it was like, ooh, let's get them done, you know. Prior to that, I think we hand count it. Um, now that I have a little better understanding of it, it goes through pretty quickly. So, I don't think there's an issue with doing them all in the election day. Just having the judges there approve them.
Okay. Any more questions? None. Hearing none. All those in favor of eight point five, the resolution relating to the absentee voting, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Katie?
Second.
Randy? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none, motion passes.